Here we go.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the virtual meeting for the Board of Selectmen on February 3rd, 2021. I'm going to start by re-apply what we do at each of these meetings. Good evening. As Chairman of Wolfboro Board of Selectmen, I'm declaring that an emergency exists and I am invoking the provisions of RSA 91A23B. Federal, state, and local officials have determined gatherings of ten or more people pose a substantial risk to our community in its continuing efforts to combat the spread of COVID-19. In concurring with their determination, I also find that this meeting is imperative to the continued operation of town government and services, which are vital to public safety and confidence during this emergency. As such, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum with this body physically present in the same location. At this time, I also welcome members of the public accessing this meeting remotely. Even though this meeting is being conducted in a unique manner under unusual circumstances, the usual rules of conduct and decorum apply. Any person found to be disrupting this meeting will be asked to cease the disruption. Should the disruptive behavior continue thereafter, that person will be removed from this meeting. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states a name, please state whether there was anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required out of the right to know law. Uh, let's start with Linda.
Yeah, Linda Murray. I'm in a room in my house by myself.
Thank you. Dave Senical?
Dave Senical, I'm in a room by myself at my house.
Thank you. Paul?
Good evening, Paul O'Brien. I'm in a room at my home by myself.
Dave Bowers?
I'm in a room with my wife and I don't know where my cat is.
Okay. I'm Brad Harriman. I'm in a room by myself at home also. All right, thank you. Mr. Pinho, do we have a need for non-public this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. We do not have a need for non-public.
Oh.
Hey!
All right.
First good news of the night.
Yeah.
Consideration of minutes for January 6th, 2021. Linda?
Yes, um, on page three, uh, the last paragraph, and it starts with Ms. Murray. It should read, "Ms. Murray states that she could not support the MOU as written. The VOS cannot bind another board of selectmen. I could support some wording such as the Board of Selectmen agrees to present to voters a warrant article around 900,000 to see if the pro- the proposal receives a positive vote. The Board should have a town attorney review the MOU, and I will email this to Christine."
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I think we also, at least I found with the minutes, we should have a copy of the MOU attached to the minutes. And if we still know what addition of the warrant articles we were working on, they should be attached. It makes sense out of some of the wording that's in this, uh, which is in the minutes.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else have anything else for the January 6th minutes?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the minutes as amended. Any other discussion? A roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Harriman votes yes also. The next set of minutes is for January 13th, 2021. Do we have any comments or corrections on this? Linda?
Yeah, this is again, it's just for attachments, the same thing. Whatever addition of warrant articles we were looking at, we also were looking at photos and there were copies of photos that we were getting given, and also the list of the people to dedicate or moralize the annual report. All those were written documents that should be attached to the minutes that we were looking at.
Okay. Any other comments or changes?
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the minutes with the, with the attachments.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the minutes as, uh, as changed with the attachments to be attached to them. Any other discussion? Saying none, we'll have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Harriman votes yes also. Okay, next on the agenda is the January 15th minutes of 2021.
I just have the same thing for adding the warrant article.
Agreed.
Same attachments as mentioned in the other two sets. Okay. Anything else? Saying none, I'd entertain a motion.
So I'm, uh, second.
A motion of second to approve the minutes with the attachments as requested. Any other discussion? Saying none, we'll have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Harriman votes yes also. Okay. All right. Next on our agenda is a, there's some public hearings. The first one being Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021, at 6:30 virtually for the acceptance of unanticipated funds in excess of $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95B3A relative to the Wolfboro Mill Foil Committee to receive a 2021 exotic aquatic plant control grant from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for expenses incurred in the prevention of exotic species aquatic plant control in the amount of $11,178. So, Pinho or Linda's going to present this one or talk to us about this?
I can. Uh, this is a grant that the Mill Foil Committee applies for each year to, uh, get, receive some state funding for chemical and hand pulling in Back Bay, uh, Lake Whitworth and Crescent Lake. This year, uh, the grant is for, uh, a herbicide for 1.5 acres, which is the frog pond, um, off of Back Bay, and we'll use silica core as we did last year. Then there's money for dash or hand pulling, which will take place in Back Bay, Lake Whitworth, and Crescent Lake. These projects are based on a uh, mill foil management lakes, which was created by Amy Spagula by DES. And I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Linda. I'll open the public hearing now. If everybody in the public would like to ask any questions or make any comments. Saying none, we'll close the public hearing. Our board members, any questions, comments, or motions?
I can make a motion. I move to authorize the town manager to sign the 2021 exotic aquatic plant control grant from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for expenses incurred in the prevention of exotic species aquatic plant control in the amount of $11,178.
That's second.
We have a motion of second to, to approve, uh, to accept, uh, the authorization of this warrant article, uh, this, uh, public hearing. Any other discussion? Saying none, we'll have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul? And Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Harriman votes yes also. All right. Next public hearing on the agenda is the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021, at 6:30 virtually for the acceptance of unanticipated funds for an amount that is less than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95B relative to a donation from the Friends of Abenaki to cover the cost of moving the compressor to the building at a cost of $7,500. Christine, I see you're on with us. Are you going to talk to us about this one?
Yes. So this is a donation from the Friends of Abenaki. Um, at one point, Friends of Abenaki ended up buying two, uh, compressor motors for the motor, uh, the ski motor house at the bottom, and we ended up using one of them, but we never used the other one. It has been sitting outside the building. They finally rehabbed it, and now we wanted to put it in the building. So Friends of Abenaki voted to donate the $7,500 to put that back into the building. It won't be active yet, but at least it's out of inclement weather and it's where it needs to be.
Okay, thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
I will now open the public hearing. If there's anybody out in the audience that would like to ask any questions or make any comments? Saying a hearing, then we'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions, comments? Or motion?
I have one, I have one comment. I think you should all thank your Friends of Abenaki. They have been very generous to the town and helping with the equipment at Abenaki Ski Slope.
Absolutely. I completely agree with that.
I'll make a motion to accept unanticipated funds for the amount of $7,500 from the Friends of Abenaki for the compressor at the ski slope.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to accept the funds from the, uh, Friends of Abenaki. Any other discussion? Saying none, we'll have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Uh, Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Harriman votes yes also. All right. Thank you, Christine. Okay. Now we have a public hearing for a temporary event permit. A series of these. First one being for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold the Antique Crafts Fair on June 26th, 2021, with a rain date of June 27th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Clark Museum at 233 South Main Street, um, in Wolfboro. We have somebody here that's going to present this to us. Is Pat, Pat Harder does this one or? Hello? I see there's a caller 03 out here. Is...
Looks like three callers, Brad.
I can't see him on my phone here, but is, somebody can see him. Were they able to try to talk to us?
Yeah, caller two.
I think it's caller three that's trying to, that must be Pat.
Hi, this is Mike Powers from the New Hampshire Division of Forests and Lands. I'm, I'm one of the, one of the callers, if, if you can hear me.
Right, yep. Your caller one.
Okay.
This is Tom McTell from the Division of Forests and Lands, and, uh, I'm with Mike and, and we are just waiting. So I'm not sure what number I am, but...
Okay, here comes Pat.
Here comes Pat.
Yeah, you guys are a little bit later in this, in the thing here. We have the Wolfboro Historical Society right now.
That looks like she just...
Just unmute Pat Harder. Unmute if you wouldn't mind, Pat. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Yes.
Yes.
Hey! Wow! Yahoo!
Okay.
Welcome.
All right, Pat. So you're up now if you want to speak a little bit to your, the first one here you have here for the, uh, June 26th, um, for the flea market?
Yes, that's just, um, we used to do, uh, kind of a very impromptu flea market in the fall, uh, years ago, and this time we thought we would open the season with the flea market instead of closing the season with it. And that will be, um, open to anybody in, of members of the society as well as, you know, people in the town. And, uh, we'll have tables set up in the, the grounds of the Clark Museum. Um, I think in the original submission, I put a map of, so that you could see the COVID distances that we have set forth. There are six feet between each, uh, be each area, and each area is about, um, 10 feet square. So it's similar to what we've done in the past, and, uh, last year, um, we did the same thing with our, uh, Thursday Antiques and Crafts Fairs, and we had vendors, uh, I think we had about, oh, maybe 10 or 12 vendors every other Thursday. So we had, last summer we had three, uh, of these antiques and crafts fairs because we got rained out of one of them. So this year, we're going to have four.
Okay.
In conjunction with the, um, uh, farmer's market.
Yeah, we're going to be doing these one at a time, so we'll, we'll, we'll take these, uh, you know, individually here.
Okay.
What I'll do now is I'll open up the public hearing for the, uh, for this one here for the, uh, for the flea market on June 26th. Anybody out in the public want to ask any questions or make any comments? Saying then we'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions or comments for, for Pat on this one? I'll just make a comment that, you know, on our, uh, permit staff review form, by rescue, just made a comment that tents and easy ups must be flame resistant per New Hampshire Fire Code, which I'm sure they probably forwarded that information to you.
Oh, absolutely.
Yep, and also the building official...
Have tents. They're, they're open tables for the most part.
Okay. Then obviously any, uh, COVID-19 protocols in place at the time would be, um, requested to be followed.
Absolutely.
Yep. Somebody like to make a motion here on the board?
I'll move to approve a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold the Antique Crafts Fair on June 26th, 2021, the rain date 6/27, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Clark Museum, 233 South Main Street.
Second. We have a motion of second on the floor to approve this. Any other discussion? Saying none, we'll have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Harriman votes yes also. Okay. There's one, one taken care of. This one is going to be, uh, see if the, the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a, consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold the Antique Crafts, uh, Fairs on July 8th and July 22nd, rain dates of July 15th and July 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Clark Museum at 233 South Main Street. Um, okay, Pat, you're up again.
Well, these are, uh, exactly what we did last summer. We had, uh, I have a mailing list that I've gathered of local artists and craftspeople, and, uh, they rent a table space for a very nominal fee to the historical society, and we do the same setup, uh, that you can see on the map with COVID-19 regulations in place. Uh, they bring their own tables. I think we had one or two of those vendors have tents, but we do check to make sure that they are, uh, fire retardant or resistant, rather.
Okay. I'll, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing, see if anybody out in the audience would like to ask any questions or make any comments? Saying then we'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions or comments for Pat on this one?
They're just the same comments as you read for the last one, and those comments will be the same throughout the different, uh, event permits.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, Brad, you want me to make a motion?
Certainly.
Uh, I move to approve the temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold an Antique Craft Fair on July 8th, 2021, and July 22nd, 2021, with rain dates on July 15th and July 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Clark House, 233 South Main Street.
Second.
Motion of second. Any other discussion? Saying none, we'll have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Harriman votes yes also. All right, our next one. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold Antique Craft Fair on August 12th, 2021, and August 26th, 2021, with rain dates of August 19th and September 2nd of 2021, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Clark Museum, uh, at 233 South Main Street. Hey, Pat?
Well, um, that's, uh, the same thing that we did in July, and I don't, uh, know what else to tell you.
Okay. All right, this time I'll open up the public hearing to the audience out there. If everybody has any questions or comments? Saying none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members? Would entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve. Okay, Dave, I'll give it to you.
I'll move to approve the temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold a, uh, Antique Craft Fair uh, August 12th, 2021, August 26th, rain dates 19th, September 2nd, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Clark Museum.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve this, uh, public hearing, this event. Any other discussion? Saying none, we'll have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Uh, Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Uh, Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Harriman votes yes also. Okay, next one, a little bit different one here, which is Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold the his, the historo, historial or historical, historical tea event from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Clark Museum at 233 South Main Street.
Right, this one is, is quite a bit different. Um, we have, we have it inside the barn, which of course we were not able to do last year, but we, uh, are going to have, uh, several historical enactors. Um, so you would, we would have the, uh, the public would come in and have tea and pastries and be able to sit and chat with, um, uh, historical actors. And, uh, I think we've had, we had Rosie the Riveter, uh... And, uh, I think we've had, we had Rosie the Riveter, uh, one year, uh, we've, we've only done this, I think we did this, uh, two, two summers in a row. Um, it was so popular the first year that we did it that we had two, uh, seedings the second year, but that, that was a lot to ask, uh, some of our actors to, you know, you know, be on stage for that long. But nonetheless, it was a, a, a big crowd pleaser, so we'd like to do it again. Um, the, we don't have a list of the enactors, uh, yet, but they're local people. And, uh, we get, uh, volunteers to make the pastries and, you know, we purchase, uh, drinks and that sort of thing. We have, uh, we had planned, if we could have had the, uh, the tea outdoors last year, we were going to have individually wrapped pastries and bottled drinks so that we would keep the, uh, the COVID protocols in place.
Okay. This time I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody out there wish to make a comment or ask a question? Saying none will close the public hearing. Board members? Go, Linda?
Okay, I'll move to approve a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold the historical tea event from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Clark Museum on, let's see, the date is out of here.
Yeah, either. Uh, August 15th.
That's on, uh, August 8th, uh, 15th, Pat?
I believe so.
Okay, on August 15th. Your turn, Dave.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this, this permit. Any other discussion? Saying none, have a roll call vote. Uh, Linda?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Hammerwood, yes, also. Okay, our next one. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold a lecture series on June 7th, July 12th, August 2nd, 2021, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Clark Museum at 233 South Main Street.
Um, I would like to make a change in the time of, of that, uh, event. Those are evening events and they start at 7:00 and they end usually, uh, by 8:30. And they are inside the barn.
From 7:00 PM until when, Pat?
Until 8:30 PM.
8:30. Okay. Anything else you want to say about this one here, or?
Oh, well, we've had the lecture series for absolute, for years and years. I don't even know how long. Uh, there, um, some local historians, we have, we get grants from the state to sometimes, uh, choose a lecture, a lecturer from a list of, uh, of, that provided by the, um, the state of New Hampshire. Uh, we have so many people in the area that are kind of knowledgeable about particular subjects that, uh, we, I think that for, in the past, the, the past, uh, season, we had local people and they're very, very, uh, interesting people. We've had, uh, Native American speakers, um, there's a Tufton Borough resident who's going to hopefully be speaking this year about, um, Revolutionary War episode in the area. So we, we don't have our list. We don't, we don't have the, the people signed up yet, but we wanted to wait until we got approval.
Okay. All right, this time I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody out in the audience wish to ask questions or make a comment? Saying then we'll close the public hearing. All right, board members, what's our wish with this one?
I'll move to, uh, approve the temporary event permit uh, for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold a lecture series on June 7th, July 12th, August 7th, 2021, from 7:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the Clark Museum, 233 South Main Street.
It goes 8:30 PM, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, 8:30, okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this, uh, this permit. Any other discussion? Saying none, have a roll call vote. Uh, Linda?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yeah.
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yeah.
And Brad Hammerwood, yes, also. Okay, getting, getting closer towards the end of these. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold a floral workshop on June 12th, uh, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Clark Museum at 233 South Main Street.
Uh, this is an event that we had, uh, two summers ago. It's, it's a make and take. We had somebody from the garden club, uh, came in and did, uh, a floral, uh, uh, workshop, flower arranging and we had, uh, overflow. We actually had a waiting list of, uh, pe, local people who wanted to be part of it. Um, the, there was a very small fee attached so that the, uh, presenter could buy, you know, flowers. Um, and that was so successful that we wanted to do another one. Uh, this one is going to be, um, uh, something called, a Victorian, uh, bouquet. It's called a tussie mussee and there, there are tiny little flowers that are made into a handheld, uh, bouquet and you can put it in a, in a vase. So that's, uh, I, I believe that's what we're going to be doing this year. Hopefully, everybody is still on board and they haven't, uh, moved away or changed their minds. So we have two people lined up, so if one can't do it, then the, the next person can.
Okay. This time I'll open up the public hearing to anybody out there that would like to ask a question or make a comment? Saying then we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll move to approve the temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold a floral workshop June 12th, 2021, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Clark Museum.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve this permit. Any other discussion? Saying none, have a roll call vote. Uh, Linda?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Hammerwood, yes, also. Okay. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold autumn, autumn flea market on October 9th, 2021, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Clark Museum, 233 South Main Street.
And once again, this will close our, our season of events. It'll be the same thing that we have done in the past. Um, I wanted to mention about all of our events that parking has not been a problem, uh, so far. We have, um, all of our, uh, presenters and vendors park elsewhere. I've gotten permission from the Episcopal Church to use their lot. Uh, and it worked very well last summer, so we don't anticipate any problems, uh, for this summer. And fall.
All right, thank you, Pat. At this time I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody out in the audience wish to ask a question or make a comment?
Hi, Mary DePerey is here.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, I just wanted to comment that, uh, we will absolutely be sure to, uh, publish each and every one of the events that have been approved tonight in the community events calendar and our online calendar and we encourage organizations to submit them to us up to a year in advance. So the fact that Pat is presenting them all now is advantageous for the events that she's presenting, but also for the community to just be able to look forward to them. So this is wonderful and I'm really happy to have the information and to be able to publish that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mary, and I will get you a hard copy so that you can have all of the, uh, the different events and, and whatever information that we have, like, for instance, for the lecture series, as soon as I get them lined up, I will get that to you.
Look forward to it, Pat. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else out in the public that would like to make a comment on, on this, uh, this event? Saying then we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Brad?
Yes.
Yeah, I want, I want to thank Pat for coming back in and putting all these events in the form that works for us in terms of the ordinance. Um, I appreciate that. I also appreciate the fact that she addressed the parking, that that is a, an important thing to have, uh, done. So I think these are great events and I hope the public comes out to enjoy them all.
Oh, we're, we're going to drag them in by their ears if we have to.
Sounds like a plan.
I'll, I'll second your motion, Linda.
Okay, I'll start it right now. Uh, I move to approve the temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Historical Society to hold the Autumn Flea Market on October 9th, 2021, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Clark House, 233 South Main Street.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second to approve this permit. Any other discussion? Saying none, have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Uh, Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Hammerwood, yes, also. Again, thank you, Pat. As Linda said, thank you for, for coming back.
I wanted to thank, um, Amy Mu, Mu, Capone Mutio for helping me with the paperwork. She was just invaluable and, uh, that is the reason that I got it done so quickly. It's really her. I, I, Amy, thank you.
You're welcome, Pat.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Good, and good luck with all the events.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is public input. Do we have anybody out there during the public input session right now? Saying, saying none, we'll move on. Our next item on the agenda is our bulk vote, which tonight we have two weekly manifests, one from January 22nd for a total of, for $121,394.39 and another manifest dated January 29th for $123,911.31. Uh, we have current use applications. Um, one of them up on Started Road for $810, uh, current use in, uh, Bigford Road for $7,970, uh, on that one. Property tax refunds, abatements. We have a property for $3,197.19, another one for $3,124.30. Um, one's at zero and one's at $46.99. Also includes, uh, one, two, three, four intent to cut, uh, wood, timber permits. And we have some property tax exemption credits, um, for one, two, three, two properties approved and one property, uh, denied. So we'll bulk vote for items A through E. Anybody would like to make a motion on that?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bulk vote items A through E. Any other discussion? Saying none, have a roll call vote. Uh, Linda?
Yes.
Uh, Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave Bowers?
Yes.
And Brad Hammerwood, yes, also. Okay. We have no board of committee appointments to do. Do we have, uh, under new business? We have a discussion regarding the timber sale for Governor Wentworth's property. I believe we had Paul was on a few minutes ago from New Hampshire Division of Forests and Lands.
Yes, hello, uh, this is Mike Powers, uh, with New Hampshire Division Forests and Lands and Tom Natal is, uh, on with me. Uh, we, we tried to, um, log on to the GoToMeeting app, but we were having trouble downloading it, so, um, unfortunately we have to join you folks by phone tonight.
Okay.
Uh, so yeah, well, thanks for, uh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and, and board members for, um, for, uh, allowing us to, to speak tonight. We're, uh, we just wanted to provide some information, um, on our upcoming timber sale uh, that we are currently planning on the Governor Wentworth's historic site. Um, the last, uh, harvest on this site occurred back in, uh, 2009 and, uh, Tom, uh, Natal, uh, was actually involved with that, that timber sale. Uh, and at that time, uh, there was a meeting held, there's a public hearing, uh, held with, uh, the selectmen, um, just to give some information on the project. And we thought it would be a good idea to do the same thing this time around, uh, because we know whenever there's, uh, you know, projects on, on public land that a lot of times the town will, will get, uh, phone calls and get questions from, uh, concerned residents. So, uh, that's, that's why we're here tonight. Uh, we're, we're going to, uh, uh, Tom had a, a PowerPoint presentation that we were hoping we could, uh, a quick PowerPoint that we could, uh, share with you, uh, with the board members. I'm not sure if we'll be able to do that by phone, but we could at least, uh, take a little bit of time to, to, uh, to explain the project if that, if that works.
Yep, that sounds good.
Mike, I do have the slide program if you want me to navigate through it as you discuss it.
Yeah, that would, that would be great. I was, I was just gonna give a quick overview of, uh, New Hampshire Division and Forests and Lands and, and kind of, uh, our, our general overview of what we do and how we manage. And I'll just, it'll be about five minutes and then I'll turn it over to Tom to, uh, kind of talk in a little bit more detail about the, the project itself. And then, um, if we could go through that PowerPoint, um, you know, Tom, that Tom put that together, so he'll, uh, he'd be the one to, uh, to go through that with you.
Okay.
So, yep, great. So, um, uh, Division of Forests and Lands, uh, we manage about 170,000 acres, um, uh, throughout New Hampshire and also another 52,000 acres of land that's owned by, uh, New Hampshire Fish and Game. We have an MOU with Fish and Game, uh, that we manage their, their properties is, as well. Uh, our policy is that our timber sales, uh, should be part of a sound forest management program to harvest timber on state-owned forest land in productive, sustainable and ecologically sensitive manner. And so we put out about, uh, 20 different, uh, sales per year, uh, all across the state, uh, from right down on the Massachusetts border, right up to the Canadian border and, and everywhere in between. Uh, I, I think last year we did about 20, we, we, we sold about 24 different timber sales, so it was a little bit of a, a higher year last year, um, as far as the sales go. Uh, and a typical sale involves about a 40-step process, uh, that we go through, um, as part of the planning process. So there's, there's quite a bit of oversight and planning and time that gets put into, uh, into these sales before we even, uh, you know, cut any trees down. And a typical, uh, timber sale lasts about four to six weeks and our re-entry intervals tend to be about 10 to 15 years apart. And like I said earlier, this, the, the last time we were on this property was about 12 years ago in, in 2009 and, and Tom was part of that project. Uh, so part of the, the 40-step process that I, I spoke about earlier, um, involves, uh, us going before our state land management team, to present the project and, and talk about what's, uh, what the project is all about. And and the, the state land management team is made up, it's a panel that's made up of, that's made up of natural resource professionals that work for the state, folks from agencies such as Fish and Game, Natural Heritage Bureau, Department of Historic Resources, the Trails Bureau, and New Hampshire Parks and Rec. After that happens, the planning report is then written by the project forester, which is Tom, and reviewed by the regional forester, which is myself, and also our bureau administrator. Once edits and concerns have been addressed within the planning report, we begin the process of notifying our butters to the property and of course, the town officials that we're going to be starting the process of laying out and marking the project. So we're looking at marking and laying the project out in the months of February and March if all goes well. And showing, the timber showing would be held in the month of, probably in the month of June. And Tom will kind of go into this a little bit more detail, but it looks like if any cutting occurs, it would be next winter. So nothing happening this summer or into the fall, but the project would happen next winter, winter '21, '22. And so that's all I had. I'll turn it over to Tom and then I guess if there's any questions at the end of Tom's presentation, we'd be happy to answer those.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Natal. As Mike said, I'm the project forester on this particular harvest. I do have a slideshow. I'm looking at it on my screen and I hope that, you know, we can just, you folks have one there and we can just kind of go through it slide by slide. If you have any questions, you know, feel free to ask me and I will address them for you. So my...
We do have this up in front of us too, the slideshow. So just so you know, we're all looking at it too.
All righty. Well, so obviously I have just the title slide there discussing, you know, what site it is, what town it's in, and when I'm planning on doing this harvest. The next slide is, it's an aerial shot. The landscape condition is something that we have to look at because we do manage, you know, not just on our property, but what the surrounding landscape holds as well. And so that, you know, I'm sure most of you folks are aware of where this is. So I have it just labeled as the sale area, which is our 96-acre property there off of Route 109. And then obviously with Lake Wentworth and all the green patches are all other conservation lands that are within, you know, the landscape. Some pretty far away, some pretty nearby. So the slide three is the historic, history part of it, which I kind of find interesting myself. But so our 96-acre property was the last row Governor John Wentworth. And it was originally on what was called Smith Pond. Now it's Lake Wentworth. And looking back through some stuff you folks had on your website for Wolfborough, that he actually owned seven parcels, which back then each one was broken up to around 640 acres, which is a square mile. And he owned, some were, with some parcels being a little bigger than others. He owned, actually owned about 4,500, a little more than 4,500 acres in the area. And we're, we just have the 96, which we're very happy to have. And we do look at all those things, as Mike was saying, at Historic Resources and parks, state parks, you know, want to know, very interested when we're doing work on, you know, state parks' properties. Historic Resources is on any of our properties. It doesn't matter if it's Fish and Game or what have you, that they have a lot of information and they're looking at, you know, pre-colonial and, you know, prehistoric stuff. They delve into all of that. So they give us, you know, quite a few questions when we do present these items. The fourth slide is the management history on the property, what we have in our records over the years of previous work done. So in 1980, they had a five-acre area that they did some timber stand improvement on, TSI. I'm sure back then it might have, might have involved axes. It might have had some chainsaws. I'm not sure what they were doing back then. There's certainly some chainsaws around. I'm just not sure how much they were using them. In 1995, there was a much larger commercial harvest that involved thinning some of the stands and also some what we would call larger, we call them groups. So it's anywhere from one to two acres or actually smaller than that. We usually do like, we can do a tenth of an acre up to two acres. We would call that a group. It's just, it's a term, I guess. And they did that on 57 acres, kind of spread out here and there. And then I came in in 2009 and did a commercial harvest as well. This time, I went about a little different way and I did some, a little bit of thinning. They were, I have a map further down that will show where they are. And I also did these strips. And the strips, when I was out there, I noticed that real narrow areas when they had small skitters. I mean, skitters have gotten much larger over the years, but where it was small and narrow, I got a lot of, there was a lot of white pine regeneration that came up and that's what, that property grows white pine very well if you walk out through there. The, so that's why I went with strips, located them on a north-south layout so that, for shade and that sort of thing, that so that the trees don't get cooked in the middle of summertime. They don't dry up and die off. So they're orientated north-south, 30 feet wide, and they're going to be done over, you know, a period of time. Let's see, slide five is the overview. So this is the same, similar presentation that I give to our lands management team. So we're on Route 109. We'll be accessing via the Governor Farm Road. I have this harvest plan that I did the last time on frozen ground. It helps protect the historic resources, which the folks at Historic Resources generally request if there are, you know, areas that have any historic artifacts that aren't buried, you know, 10 or 15 feet under the ground. Obviously, these are from the 1700s, so they are, they're under the ground, but certainly not anywhere near that deep. So they like to have stuff, you know, done in the wintertime and they can request that. The other reason, which is another important reason is that with the amount of summer folks and traffic in and out of there, there's a few less people living down there on Lake Wentworth and it makes for less, I guess, headache for them and also for, you know, trucks that are coming in not to have to be worrying about so many folks driving their cars in and out of there as it is pretty much a one-lane road. So I have this scheduled for the winter, starting December 1. That's a, that's a date. It doesn't necessarily mean they can start on December 1st because if the ground is not frozen, it's, that's my call if I deem the ground frozen enough or not. Way things go, sometimes that works. By and large, it usually gets pushed out till December 15th or maybe even the first of, you know, first week in January. It really depends on how winter goes. It was a little slow start this year. So it's just a date so that we can do some planning and sale administration with the successful bidder. The sale area itself, if you drew a big circle around it, it's 54 acres. I'm certainly not cutting 54 acres. We have two plans in here. One is for the strip cuts and those total, as they did the last time, about 8.3 acres. And just for the strips. All those little 30-foot wide strips add up to about eight acres. And then we have some, what we're calling thinning. We're calling them single tree selection. It's similar but different. But that's about 8.4 acres. Now, we're not, again, we're only, we're doing a selection in there. We're just selecting certain trees to come out, ones that are, you know, diseased or hazardous, that sort of thing. It allows the other trees that we leave to continue to grow. It does allow a little more sunlight onto the ground in those areas to get some new regeneration going in there or maybe some woody plants and stuff like that that will grow in and fill in those, in those areas that get a little more light on them. And as last time, we were going to do whole tree harvesting. It comes out with a cleaner look, I guess, if you will, and where that property has a lot of folks driving in and out of there rather than a traditional cutting with a chainsaw and a cable skidder where they leave all the tops and all that stuff in the woods. It can be, for some folks, not as pleasing, I guess. So we try to tailor some of these things for, just for that purpose. We have different options, but on this property, we feel that the whole tree harvesting is something that seems to work, you know, blend well with that property. The sixth slide is we have to go through Natural Heritage Bureau, as do anybody who's going to do a timber harvest. Contractor would have to go through NHB data check and it comes back, you know, and it tells you if there's certain species or not that are associated, you know, with this surrounding area. And if that was the case, then we would have to take, you know, precautions to not, you know, hurt or disturb those particular flora fauna. And for this property, they have a bridal shiner that's associated with one of the streams further to the west and then obviously the common loon out on Lake Wentworth. We're 300 feet from the lake because it's all shorefront waterfront homes there. So we won't be disturbing any of the loons. And the bridal shiner is actually, it's off the property, but it does get associated with the drainage that comes off of Governor Wentworth. The seventh slide is something we use. It's from the Wildlife Action Plan, so it's called WAP. And it rates the importance of different areas on a property. This particular property is generally not rated. That's what all that white is. And that's because of the size of the property, the homes, and as far as habitat goes, it's, although there's plenty of wildlife out there and for some reason it doesn't show up the way they put all these Wildlife Action Plans together. It's just a, it's kind of a guide. We do have some tier three and that's on the east side and then going over into the property next door there. But I look at the whole property as being important for wildlife. I see it when I'm out there, walking around the property. I know that they hunt deer out there and there's snowshoe hare and I know there's a ton of songbirds out there, hawks, and I've seen all kinds of neat stuff out there. So I look at all of that. I am a wildlife forester, so I work for not only the Division of Forests and Lands, but my primary job is for doing commercial timber harvest on Fish and Game properties for habitat improvement. So the wildlife aspect is very important to me. So slide number eight is we have to look at the resource impacts. So as far as wildlife, the strip cuts, there's softwood that come in as well as hardwood. Hardwood gets browsed by deer and the softwood provides a lot of cover for other small wildlife and mice and voles, bunnies that live out there. There is, I have a list of some of the species. We have six that Fish and Game puts on the list as a primary concern and they are the, most of them are songbirds. So the migrating songbirds, veries, the wood thrush, cannon warbler. Let's see. And then we have rough grouse. And there was one other one. Anyhow, so it looks at the browse, what will grow back, and the density of it and how they, you know, they will be used. You know, the different birds like different habitat. Some like it open, some like it real thick for nesting. They all have a, they all don't want to live in the same place. Rough grouse with some of the openings. Our log yard is going to, we're going to reuse the log yard I used back in 2009. I have some pictures of how that grew up afterwards, if folks haven't been out there. So we have other resources, our trails and hiking, that sort of thing we look at. We know that a lot of the folks walk around and they go and look at the cellar hole and walk around. I meet some of the residents living there doing that. But there are no sanctioned hiking trails, which is generally what we're looking at. There's two private wells on the property, the Dulce well and the Trimble well. And we are required for a, to put a 150-foot protective buffer around that. I have that, I have on a map that I can show you. I have 25-foot no cutting on either side of Merrill Brook. A, let's see, cultural resources. We have the historic cellar hole and the well that is associated with that. Stone walls are throughout the whole... Uh, the stone walls are throughout the whole property. Uh, we have the, uh, we always try to use existing openings or barways, uh, when, when we are pulling wood through to, to get to the log yard. And, uh, the last time I put a 50 foot, um, limited cutting, uh, on a buffer along, uh, Governor Farm Road and Wishing Well Lane. And that will be, uh, done this time as well. The, uh, slide nine, again, uh, we have 54 acres that encompass the whole area. The, uh, I looked, I go out there and, and, um, we age the trees. And so the average age out there is 90 to 95 years old. Um, the white pine, there's a little bit of red oak out there and, uh, red maple. So we have, we look at how we can do this sustain, sustainably. Um, so we look at how many acres are, are set aside for stream buffers or the restricted or, or partially restricted. Uh, I have 84 acres that are, there's no restrictions on them. So we, we base what we can do on that. And on a hundred year rotation, which generally used for, when we're doing a work in, in white pine or, or spruce fir, softwood stands, generally speaking, um, we, we're doing a hundred year rotation. And, uh, I, it comes up with a, uh, not quite an acre a year. And if I spread that out over 10 year time, then I can do eight, uh, 8.4 acres of regeneration cutting. Uh, means we're, we're, we're taking everything out and, uh, regenerating, you know, a particular, uh, uh, area. Stand, uh, slide 10, excuse me. It's our, our objectives that we have. Um, we have, uh, we call, uh, a modified prescription, meaning we're, we're changing, um, what, what the stand, what that, that standard timber shows us as far as, um, in this case, the whole stand is, the whole property, by and large, I, I realize we've done some work in there, but by and large, that whole stand is, is an even, what we call an even age. And so we're, we're breaking that up a little bit, so we're modifying, uh, how that stand is, is gonna look in the future, you know, after 100 years of, of management. And so what we call a modify, we're, we're doing the, the strip cuts. There's gonna be 26 of them total, 30 feet wide, and it adds up to, uh, 8.3 acres. Um, I have there that there'll be no tending, which means we won't do any other cutting within those remaining areas. They, they'll be left as they are, uh, to, to, uh, continue to, to grow, uh, until the next, until we come in there the next time. Uh, there will be, the main focus is, is trying to get more white pine, uh, regeneration in there. And, uh, because of the soil types, there will be, uh, hardwoods that grow in there as well. I know at one point there was a lot of white ash in there and that seems to, uh, some of that has, uh, that died out. And of course with the emerald ash borer, uh, we're trying to take as much of the white ash to try to knock back, uh, the emerald ash borer, uh, from, from spreading, but, um, we seem to be losing ground on that. We're trying. Bugs move faster than we do. Uh, so we have some, some selective cutting or single tree, uh, selection on another 8.4 acres. And, uh, in a little bit, I have, uh, two more slides. I have that. Um, we're reducing, uh, the visual impact, uh, by regenerating long narrow strips rather than, than bigger openings. The, the biggest opening will be, uh, our log yard, uh, which will be, they're usually generally a half to three quarters of an acre. Uh, sometimes they get a little bigger than that. It depends, um, how much the, the, uh, the crew that's, that's doing the harvesting for us. Some, some like bigger, some can work in more confined spaces. It's, it's, uh, kinda up to, uh, the operator. Uh, but with that being said, when they're done, we make them, you know, clean all that up. This particular property, they will be required to, to, uh, mulch and seed and, and lime and fertilize so that it'll, it'll, uh, initially come back, um, with some grasses, that sort of thing. And eventually, uh, nature does its thing and, uh, trees will start growing on it, um, as well from all the seed that's, as trees get brought in, all the seed and stuff that, that will drop into it as well as, uh, all the little, um, trees that had been cut that were in there, they, they re-sprout, so. Uh, we're, we're improving, uh, feeding and nesting, breeding and protection opportunities for, for all the different wildlife that's out there. Uh, and retaining, uh, buffers along streams, invernal pools or, or other, uh, sensitive areas, uh, such as the, the historical cellar hole and, um, and the wells. Slide 11 is, uh, an aerial shot of the, the treatment area. I have, have a few things listed there with the cellar hole, the, the old cellar hole and then the, uh, two private wells down in the, the bottom part of the, of the photo. You can see, um, the, those strips from the air, they show up, uh, quite well. And I am doing, um, I'm bumping over, uh, 30 feet from that edge, going another 30 feet, uh, over and basically from, um, I'm going east with each one of my new strips. And I have that in the next slide, so. Uh, I got Merrill Brook running up through the top. We have all the, uh, down in the bottom, all the folks that live along the lake. And some of the other, uh, black circles or oblong shapes in there were areas that were done back in, um, 1998 during that sale. And by and large, uh, I haven't cut through those. I, I'm, I'm leaving those as, as just another, that'll be another age bracket, um, that will, you know, spread out, uh, the ages and, and diversify, uh, the, the age of the stand and, and the wildlife that uses those is different than the wildlife that, uh, a lot of times that's in the, in the new, uh, cut areas. Stand, uh, excuse me, uh, slide 12. So this shows you, uh, the, the green, um, strips are the ones from 2009 or eight, well, I planned it in 2008, but in 2009 when it was cut. And the red stripes are the 30 foot, the next 30 foot, uh, strip that's gonna be, we're gonna be laying out and marking. And the white in between that is what's, um, what's gonna be left, uh, until the next go around. And, and realize, uh, so the green strips are now, uh, 10 or 12 years old. And by the time, you know, we get to the next set, they're gonna be, be, you know, 22 years old. The other ones are gonna be, you know, 10 years old. So it's, it's, it's having this, uh, diverse age, uh, uh, class throughout the stand. That, uh, also on, on the, the, uh, it's kind of a pinkish purplish color. That was, that was the tornado damage, um, from the July 2008, um, uh, tornado that, that came through. Uh, that, that whole area, um, is, we're not even, uh, going in there. It's got some wonderful regeneration in there. Uh, you can still see, you know, obviously the upturned stumps, uh, that sort of stuff that's in there. Uh, but that was another, I think another 12 acres that we weren't even planning on doing the last time, but nature had a different idea for us. And I know Camp Burchmont, uh, next door to Westhead, I think about 30 acres that, uh, pretty much got, got laid down. Um, so slide 13 is, um, what we estimate, um, from, from when we, we go out there and, and, um, collect, uh, tree, tree data out there. We call it timber cruising. We go out and collect, uh, ages and heights and diameters and, and different species, tree species. So these are just estimated, uh, volumes. Um, when we go out there and we mark it, uh, this gets narrowed down because when we go out and mark the trees, we tally each one of them and so we can, uh, tighten up, uh, these volumes. But these are just estimates of what, uh, will come out of there. Um, slide 14, uh, these are just, I have some pictures here, uh, the two different private wells that are, uh, on the property and they, they have 150 foot buffer, uh, as I showed on the map around each one of them. This was, uh, the 2009 harvest, the slide 15. Uh, you can see the, uh, the upper left, that yellow house is the one that's across the street, uh, across Route 109. This was, uh, when the tornado came through. Um, the lower, uh, right hand side has, has some of the, the root masses that, that got turned up when the trees got knocked over and dogged. The wood next to it is what, what had been cut out of there. Uh, slide 16 is just more of the projects. You can see on, uh, the upper left, uh, when, when certain soils, uh, and pines, uh, start to, they are definitely mature as, as far as forestry is concerned, um, uh, it, they start to get mature, you know, anywhere between 80 years up to, you know, 120, 140. You can see this, uh, the end of this, uh, pine tree, uh, on the butt end of this, this tree, the rot that's in the center of it. And we, we found not all, but there's certainly a, a good percentage of them, uh, that looked like that. So these trees are, are definitely on their, on their way out. They would last, you know, many more years, but then they start to become also hazards for, for folks. Uh, down in the, the lower right, uh, there's a, a pine tree down in the middle on, on the snow there, and that's red rot. And that's another, uh, uh, thing that's associated with, with, uh, uh, disease in the trees and, and an unhealthy, uh, stem. That one in particular was, was looking pretty sickly. The oak that you see in there are, uh, the oak grows, uh, very nice out there, not very tall, but it does grow, uh, fairly well out there. And we got some good oak regeneration, uh, from the last go around, so the wildlife, uh, can benefit from that as well. And then, uh, that, uh, on the left side, um, that, that smaller tree that's in there with the brown center is, uh, is an ash tree and pretty typical, um, on different soils, the ash, uh, as far as their, their centers, their hearts, uh, get, get fairly dark. And I think if we took down any one of the other ash that are still standing out there, we'd, we'd see the same thing, if, if not worse. And with the emerald ash borer coming out, the, uh, forest, uh, protection folks are asking us to take out, uh, any ash trees that, you know, are within our, our timber sale, uh, to, to get rid of them. This, uh, slide 17 has some pictures of the strip cuts. They're, they're 30 foot wide. Um, the machines run, you know, they'll cut up through there, lay the wood down, and then the skitters use those, um, lanes, those 30 foot lanes, uh, to, to move the wood up and down through there so they don't have to go, uh, through, through other parts of the forest. The, the one on the upper right, you have the dead end sign, that was a, that's the edge of the road, looking back in 50 feet, uh, just a few trees were taken out. The, uh, to try to, a buffer, you know, the, the, the wood, the, uh, sail coming right out to the edge of the road. I think this is on, uh, Wishing Well Lane. And then the bottom one is, is also, uh, looking at the neighbors, our butters, uh, the ones that are on this side of Route 109. And.
Yeah, they're all virtual, yeah.
The, the last, uh, picture is, uh, the snow is where our log yard was. And, uh, where everything had been wiped out by the tornado in the log yard. And the lower one is the, uh, is what regenerated in there, uh, just, just on its own. Uh, folks ask us why we don't, uh, plant. We, Mike and I, uh, work at the State Forest Nursery over in Bostorn where we grow thousands and thousands of tree seedlings. And folks wanna know sometimes why we don't plant. And I'll, I can show a picture like this and, in, in, uh, 12 years' time, uh, where, where the upper picture is with my truck sitting there, that's what it looks like now, uh, just from natural, uh, regeneration, so. Um, other than that, that was slide 18 and, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't give you that number. But with that, um, I guess I have, uh, nothing else at this point. If you, if you folks have any other questions, I, I did have a couple notes, I will add, uh, that the, the hours, the last time I did this, I had, uh, restricted hours of operation. So obviously it's winter time only and they were only allowed to cut. So you would hear the machine, uh, cutting trees, uh, Monday through Friday, no weekends, 7:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the evening. Uh, when they can truck the wood out, they had Monday through Saturday. So we added a Saturday date in there, uh, 7:00 in the morning to, to 5:00 in the evening. But that's only for trucking, you know, at that extra day and no cutting on the weekends at all, only Mon- Monday through Friday, and that was it. Um, let's see, uh, the existing roadways, uh, will be kept clear of any debris, um, in the roads. If branches, you know, break off and drop out onto the roadways, that, that gets picked up, um, you know, so that, uh, there's no issues to the folks trying to drive in and out of there. And again, this sale would be going theoretically from December 1st of, uh, this winter, 2021, in through spring breakup. Um, that's generally, uh, beginning of March and then of course the, the roads, the roads get posted, uh, that sort of thing, although I don't think 109 gets posted, but certainly the, the roads within, uh, Governor Wetworth itself, you know, we're very, uh, conscious of that. I know it's, uh, the, the folks that spend a lot of money, uh, making sure those roads are in nice shape. So, uh, we do require on our contracts, uh, we have, uh, bonds that the contractor has to put up and we hold that bond until, um, everything has been completed and done to, uh, my satisfaction and Mike's satisfaction as he oversees me, uh, on this work. Uh, if there's, you know, any particular issues or whatever, the contractor has to take care of that. Uh, but we hold the bond, uh, just as, as an insurance that, uh, things, things will get, um, uh, put to bed, so to speak. So with that, I will stop talking and if you folks have any questions, uh, either myself or Mike, I will try to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, very informative, a lot of information there, so. Board members, do you have any questions for these gentlemen here, or comments? It just says, it seems as though you guys really have a, uh, you know, a detailed It just says, it seems as though you guys really have a uh, you know, a detailed plan on how you're approaching the the property there and uh um put a lot of thought into it, and and you know, we'd really appreciate it. I'm sure all the neighbors out there, especially along Lake Wetworth and stuff, uh appreciate that too, so.
Thank you, yeah. We we do, we we actually, it takes it takes generally uh about a year's time from when we're we're sitting and planning what we want to do in the next, uh you know, our our yearly uh uh projects that we want to do, it takes about a year from then until we actually get any equipment on the ground. So it's not something that uh we we uh just on a whim decide, hey, let's go cut over here. It's uh it's very well thought out. It's it's been set up that way um for a long time, but for for a very good reason.
Yep.
Brad?
Yes. Hi, Mary.
Is there an opportunity for comment?
Yeah, I'd, but somebody asked a question if they have any question to comment on this, sure.
I do have a question and comment.
Jesus, Mary.
Um. So I found the whole presentation extremely fascinating. Um I make the point to go out and physically go to that site on a regular basis. I find the history of it just incredibly important to our community. So this is really news to me, and whether, so maybe I should be ashamed that I should have known, but I'm I'm curious about any other responsibility of the Forest and Lands Department. Um I'm also curious about the timeframe. It looks like it's ten to fifteen years that they do a cut. Um I have done a little research over the years about the harvesting and thinning and the uh rewards of that, but I'm just more curious about the timing of it. And then um is there any other responsibility of Forest and Lands for that particular site? And I also am wondering, I do not know what the MHB report, what that is. That's a question. Um but overall, I think it's amazing. This has been very informative, and that is an incredible piece of property in the town of Wolfboro, in my opinion, and thank you so much, Tom and Mike, and I apologize, I didn't get your last names enough to recite them here, but it's been very helpful to hear your presentation. Thank you.
Well, you're you're very welcome, and um uh I I don't think Mike, I don't know if Mike, if we had discussed this or not, but the last time um I I did a sale out there, we actually did uh a public uh tour of the property. I'm I'm not sure how all that works now with the whole the whole COVID and social distancing stuff, but um uh I know that I'm I'm more than willing to go out and and uh walk, you know, on the property and discuss things with folks in person. Like I said, I'm not sure, you know, the the whole COVID restriction thing and how that plays into stuff, but um.
I think we could do something, Tom, as as long as it was a, you know, a pretty, pretty small group. We we couldn't have, uh, you know, I think over ten anyways out out there, but if there was some interest, uh as long as it was a smaller group, I I don't think that would be um too much of an issue there, but we could, we could always check with our administrator as well.
Okay.
And then I think there was a question I I think there was a question as far as the timing on on these sales, and that that that's a, that's a pretty, that's an interesting question, and it really uh depends on on uh, you know, what type of cutting is going on, and then the, you know, like Tom was talking about earlier, again, it depends a lot on the age of the different stands within the property. And so some of the older stands, the, you know, we maybe have a little bit more of an accelerated kind of reentry period. Um and especially if we're doing smaller type cuts like Tom is doing, and then we we try to get in every ten years or so. Uh if we have larger properties where we're doing maybe some heavier cutting or larger cuts, um uh just because of the scope and the size of the property, it might take, uh it it the reentry interval might be closer to that fifteen to twenty years, so um it really, there's a kind of a lot of different variables. It's, you know, species dependent, uh age dependent, and then the uh the size of the the properties is as well, so that that kind of factors into uh those decisions. And now N H B was the Natural Heritage Bureau. Um it's it's just an agency that um uh that kind of tracks um threatened and endangered species across the state, uh as well as rare and natural, uh rare and uh rare and uh uh like different, different, different types of of plant communities that might uh essentially be threatened or endangered or um. So that that's what, that's what the Natural Heritage Bureau does.
All right.
Okay. Again, thank you very much. And I believe we have, Mr. Peter, do we have their contact information in case somebody wants to contact them to possibly go out and view the property and stuff? Uh they could get that information through the town hall?
We do have that information, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Again, gentlemen, thank you very much, and uh good luck with this cut coming up next winter, and uh we'll see you in probably ten years when the next one comes around.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you all. I appreciate your time.
Nice to see someone who loves their job. It's awesome.
Okay, next on our agenda, discussion regarding the renewal of the Payment and Lure Taxes Agreement for Hearthstone Homes.
So, Mr. Chairman, this uh we we discussed at the the previous uh board meeting, um this one and the the next one, uh Item C. Um so these are up for approval based on the recommendation of the last meeting.
Board members have any questions, comments, or motion moving forward?
I can make a motion. I move to sign the two thousand and twenty one renewal of payment and move taxes agreement with Hearthstone Homes.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the renewal of the Payment and Lure Taxes uh with Hearthstone Homes. Any other discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote, Linda?
Yes.
Uh Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave Bowers, he still with us here?
I don't see him, Mr. Chairman.
I don't see him either here. And Brad Harrow was yes also. Okay, next on our agenda is renewal of Payment and Lure Taxes for the New Hampshire Boat Museum.
Same thing, Mr. Chairman. This is um coming to you based on the approval of uh the last Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Chairman, I'll make them. Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, uh move to sign the two thousand twenty one renewal of payment and low tax with agreement with the New Hampshire Boat Museum.
Second.
A motion in a second to uh approve the uh Payment and Lure Taxes Agreement with the New Hampshire Boat Museum. Any other discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote, Linda?
Yes.
Dave Senical?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a renewal agreement with the boat agent, renewal of boat agent agreement with Good Hugh and Hawkins Navy Yard.
Brad?
Yes, hi, Amy.
Hi. So Jeremiah Burke is the general manager of Good Hugh and Hawkins. He was on here um a little bit ago, but I did speak with him today, and he had another engagement, so he was hoping to be able to get through it before he had to go. So um this is a housekeeping item. It's an annual approval. Good Hugh and Hawkins um is you will authorize them to register boats, which is a great thing because they can do it on the weekends when the town clerk's office is not open. And once the board authorizes to sign it, um then Jeremiah will come in and sign it, and it'll be notarized.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the board? Uh motion, Linda?
I have a comment. This has been a very good relationship for the town. They, as I recall, I don't know what this year was, but they bring in about twelve thousand dollars for us in running this, so I really want to thank Good Hugh and Hawkins for being willing to do that. I know it helps them, but it definitely helps us as a town.
Definitely.
You're a very good business partner. Yep.
He did tell me today they get very busy.
You want to, you want a motion tonight, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I would love one.
Move to sign the renewal of twenty twenty one boat agent agreement with Good Hugh Hawkins Navy Yard.
Okay. A motion and a second to sign the renewal for the twenty twenty one for the boat agent agreement with Good Hugh and Hawkins? Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, Linda?
Yes.
Uh Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Dave Bowers is still still out, is he?
Yeah, I can't find him.
And Brad Harrow votes yes also. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a uh municipal committee rules of procedure adoption.
Timely.
Brad?
This is something that was worked on previously, um and we've we've got, obviously, some elections coming up with some changes and in some um positions uh and committees. Um Linda got this uh going again. Um so we we've reviewed it, we brought this forward, um and we think it's important that um we have some guidelines in place for chairs to be able to work under. Uh I think Linda would like to speak to it.
Yeah, yeah, Linda.
Yeah, well, um about a year or so ago, I had a chairman call me up and say, how, what do I do as a chairman? And I drew up some ideas, and I talked to Matt, and he drew up the municipal committee committee chair guidelines. In the back is also the rules of procedure. Um I took our uh Board of Selectmen rules of procedure and cut out all sorts of information that applied just to us and tried to put it in um in in terms of the committee uh responsibilities of the members, letting the members understand what uh meaning was. It also talks about the RSA on who has authority to do what. Um and uh and so I just did that to supplement the uh committee chair guidelines.
Yeah, I think it's a great document. Um I appreciate all the work you did on that, Linda. That's it's great to as we get into some of these subcommittees, some folks that might take charge of them, like you said, are fairly green at this, and uh you nice to have some guidelines, some go by, so that's great. Any comments or questions for the board?
I agree, it's very timely. I think it's well done. So good memory of Matt, it's quality work. I move to adopt the municipal committee rules of procedure as presented to be distributed to all board, town boards and committees.
A second, Tom.
A motion in a second to adopt the uh municipal committee rules of procedure as presented this evening. Any other discussion? Linda?
I do. These are for Board of Selectmen committees. They they aren't going to go to those committees that are established by RSAs. They're the non-RSA committees.
Yep. Any other discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote, uh Linda?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. All right, one more discussion coming up here on this, these items here, the Atlantic Broadband Survey up update.
Chairman, uh uh to try to catch us up on the agenda, pleasure of the board, uh and I know that Mr. Senical will will agree with this. I will uh I'll I'll have this posted in the minutes. It's already out on, or will be out on the town website tonight, and uh I'll be glad to take you guys through it uh at our next meeting. Uh we have some parties out here who want to uh want to speak. I'll just give you the Cliff Notes, give you the Cliff Notes version of this. Um as you all know, we have a renewal of the contract. We have a great cable franchise team, they're great people. Uh we have uh we we did a survey. We got over a thousand people responded to the survey, both in text and email. I mean, and I'm sorry, and in the bill or through uh online. We uh I reviewed the survey results with the franchise team the other night. Jim and I and Tavis reviewed the survey results, just the, just the headlines, uh not the details, with uh Atlantic Broadband's head of head of corporate operations the other day, as well as the, as well as their finance uh people. Um there's over forty pages, I'm sorry, a hundred pages of verbatims. Um I have some recommendations for the board to consider. And I will just park it by saying that, you know, they are the incumbent. And what we should be doing is helping them be successful in our town. We should also, because we can't fire them, uh we could, I guess. You guys will have to decide that as a successor. Um but it will be uh be something I think would be unfortunate to do. We need to help them get better. And uh that's the model that I've always practiced in my business career, and I think that's the model we should practice here with the incumbent. They need to do some work, and they know it, and they've agreed to it. So I'll I'll put all of this data out on the town website, we'll put it up on uh on our minutes, and uh be glad to uh take you through the excruciating details next time, but I just want to catch us up on the agenda, unless you want me to do the presentation, which I know Mr. Senical is going to say, no, don't do it.
I appreciate that, Paul.
Hey, I can see, I can see everybody, like even Penny has given us a big ooh rah on that one, so.
All right, thank you, Paul, for the update. Do you have any other businesses this evening to bring up and discuss? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Start off with Linda?
Uh yeah, I had a town milfoil committee meeting, that's one we uh they voted to send the um the grant over to the Board of Selectmen. Uh the Milfoil Joint Board had a meeting. I went to the E D C, and they reviewed their letter and survey. Um they are going to uh come back with another draft, which will go to the next meeting. Wolfboro Waters is still, has not heard everything, all that, does not have all the data back on water quality samples. Um we reviewed a educational pamphlet. We discussed uh the Winter Harbor management, watershed management plan that will be coming to the Board of Selectmen, I think, at our next meeting for us to approve it. Um and then we also discussed uh putting together a steering committee to start working on the Wolfboro Bay Back Bay uh watershed management plan. So we will be working on that. You'll be hearing more in the um months to come. And that's all I have.
Linda, Dave?
Yeah. I think most of us remember that we had a deliberative session last night. Uh so we did spend a little bit of time uh dealing with that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dave. Paul?
Um yeah, Wolfboro Waters Committee with Linda, uh she covered the uh the headlines. Uh the Atlantic Broadband uh conversations Jim and Tavis and I had with their leadership team. Uh and uh yes, we we all uh had a wonderful time last night at the deliberative session. I I personally think that uh that um That our town team, the, the department heads, they know their stuff. And I, and I came through loud and clear that they know what they're doing. And I, I, I'm just telling you as a, about to be a former person, that's pretty damned impressive. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Paul. So maybe the only thing I've had since our last meeting was the, the deliberative session last night. As you all know, the time I got home and settled in, it was early this morning, so it was fairly late, so. So that was, that was it for me.
Mr. Senical had, had a chocolate, what'd you have last night when you went home?
Chocolate brownie cake.
Thanks for sharing. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. I know you'd do the same.
Okay, Penny, we have a town manager's report this evening.
Yeah, a- as you said, deliberative session last night. Like to thank everybody that was involved. It, it went off quite well. Also like to thank the school district for allowing us to use the Arts Center. Greatly appreciated. The venue worked wonderful for us. We were able to do it safely and hopefully people were able to. Watch it from home and get a better idea of what, what's going on in our community and some of the questions being asked. With that said, Mr. Chairman, I had a conversation or email exchange today with Mary DeFries. They are looking at holding the Candidates' Night. That's tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, the 24th. Not set in stone yet, but they, they may want to utilize the Great Hall. I, I have no issue with that. We will, we, we've got some, some work to do if they do decide to use that facility. I just want to run that by the board and make sure there's no issues that the board has relative to using the Great Hall. For the Candidates' Night. It would be 5:30 in the evening, so the staff will be out of house. And we would have a, a post-cleaning done of the facility. If it is in fact the facility they choose to use.
Okay, Paul?
Goes without saying, but I'll say it anyways, consistent with CDC guidelines, mask wearing protocols. All that kind of, all that kind of, you know, accoutrements. That would be, I'd have no objection if, if those things are followed.
Yeah, Linda?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they know the maximum number of people that could go into that facility, keeping the distance. And. That's my main concern, that we keep all those protocols in place with Paul.
Yep. I presume this will get all streamed on the tube. Community TV will be involved.
Mary's actively working with Wolfboro Community TV on that item as well.
Thank you.
Exactly. You know, my thought too is that gives us the option to have a, the hybrid style meeting there, like we do with the planning board. So people that didn't feel comfortable coming to the Great Hall could join in virtually, ask questions and, and, and stuff there too, so. Think it's a great opportunity for people to be involved.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have anything else at this point. Thank you.
I just received, I think we all did, from Mr. Bauer, is somehow, must have been when I was talking about the cable company. He's lost his internet connection and if there's any votes, we should call him up and see if we can get him on the phone.
Okay, thank you. So next on our agenda is, we're going to turn, turn ourselves into the Libby Museum trustees. And have a discussion regarding the MOU that has been presented to us, so. At this time. I don't know if we, we don't, do we need a vote to go into this, this other board, or do, can we just kind of maneuver over into this and have Paul take over as chairman of the trustees?
I think we can just transition over, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I'll turn this over to Paul at this time.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Okay, so we'll, we'll convene the Libby trustees at 19 after the hour of eight. Okay, so there was a, there was a memorandum of understanding draft proffered to the. If, if, it was a memorandum of understanding draft proffered to the. Board of Selectmen a few weeks back, Mr. Herriman brought that to, to the board. We, we took this letter and we moved it to Attorney Puffer, as was mentioned in the minutes that we approved tonight. Attorney Puffer has reviewed the, the letter. And you all have that in your packets. And. No, I'll just, I won't read the entire letter because I don't want to bore people, but the, the ask by the Friends of Libby. Was, was for a partnership. And as a, as a part of that partnership, the ask was for the town to. And I don't know what the right words are, but the town to promise. Pledge, whatever the right words are. In an MOU, the sum of $900,000 can, in some way contingent upon the. The Friends of the Libby raising $2 million. Attorney Puffer has reviewed that letter, and I make, it's again, just for context. His, his advice to us is that the, we cannot enter into that type of an agreement. Unless and until the voters. Actually give us the ability to appropriate those monies. My personal opinion is, you know, that's, that's fine. But I think we, we should have a conversation around this table. As to what's the best path forward here, because to me. This was the first time and I was, I was thrilled then and I'm still thrilled by it. We, we have an organization or at least a couple of people that are saying, we want to go out and raise. Several million dollars in capital. Also want to, and they also want to raise a million dollars in or so, in, in an endowment. That, that puts the Libby on a great path. And so the question for us as Libby trustees is, consistent with what Mr. Puffer has advised us. What are your thoughts on how we go forward? And, and some of you were involved in, in other fundraising activities around Town Hall and. And libraries and things of the nature, so guidance here for, for us and then maybe we'll have some public input as well.
Yeah, go ahead, Linda. Go ahead, Paul, is that too, sorry.
You know, I agree with Paul. I think what the Friends of the Libby Museum are trying to do here is exactly what the town needs to have happen. And what I see them asking for us is, can you give us some kind of document that we can go out? And show prospective. Donors that shows that you as a town want to see this project going forward. And obviously, we can't put it in the form that's here, but I'd like us to come up and find some kind of a document. That says that we are willing at some point to send it out to the voters. They're going to need to get all their pledges contingent upon a warrant article passing by the town. That's what happened with the Friends of the Library. That I know is what happened with the Friends of the Town Hall. They got three-year pledges. It was contingent upon a warrant article passing. So I think that I, you know, I'd be willing to send out a warrant article with. I'm willing to go out and ask the voters for the project. My other concern is, I don't know by the time this comes around whether 2.9 million will be enough with what's happening with building costs. So I'd like to see us find something that they're able to use to go out and raise money.
Sales? Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, in reading through Mark Puffer's comments and stuff here, you know, about the fact that we can't really enter into contract. The way the other original one was written, he offered some type of a language here, if we could kind of re, get this reworded. For us to, you know, either support. Support this project going forward with the anticipation of. Producing a warrant article for the first project when it, when the time comes. Like his wording here is, is, is anticipated the town will contribute $900,000, the project cost. However, the raising and appropriating can only be accomplished by the vote of town meeting. You know, we need to have that language in there that, that. It refers to that, that needs to go to a town vote, obviously for approval. And that's going to be the ultimate deciding factor for the, for the whole project, so. I, I think there's some common ground in here that we can come up with that friends could then take to their committees and then, and start their campaign. For, for this project here, so. I guess I kind of wondered how, what the next step is, we. Do we help write something like that? We kind of, you know, obviously, some of the friends are with us here this evening, so they'll have some comments, whether they would. We should ask them to come back with us with some of this type of wording, or it's kind of probably the next step of our conversation, I'd say.
Yeah, I saw Mr. Senical's light go on. Dave, will you, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I think that if they're willing, and I think we've talked about this before. They need, my understanding, they need a certain type of wording as well. For some of the people that are going to donate to this project. So either we come up with something and then give it to them to see if it's okay with them. Or whether they're going to give us something that we can incorporate in what we want to do. Am I mistaken in, in, in my thoughts on that? I, I think that they needed something. From us.
Yes.
That, that's worded in a certain way. And, and I don't know what that is. I don't think what Mark wrote is exactly what they might need to go out and. Be on solid ground to, to get their donations.
Yeah, I wonder whether two selectmen and a couple of people from their committee sit down and meet. And, and look at, and with the town manager start talking about what the agreement, what language we could use. I mean, there's, there's here and Mark said we should have at the end, this MOU is not a contract. And creates no binding rights or obligations on the part of either the selectmen as Libby Board of Trustees or the Friends of the Libby Museum. So I mean, it is an agreement, but it's not a contract. That's what he's saying here.
You know, the way I, the way, and Mark did a nice job as he always does, giving us the appropriate language of the barrister. And the, the, the question I think, I think that comes to my mind, or is a couple, is. In structuring the, the agreement or in structuring this, this letter of intent. Should we be, and I think you alluded to it, Linda, should, should there be something in this conversation that's, you know. We, we want to have defined progress points. Clearly, we've already agreed. That we're going to have quarterly or, or frequent meetings where we're going to brief the public on what is going on. Should there be defined progress points, you know, the, the friends raise X dollars. And the town, the town comes forward with whatever commitments have to be made. And then once we, once we structure that, then couldn't we pick that up and give that to the attorney and say, that's what we want the agreement. To be with obviously all the language that says it's all predicated upon the voter giving us the permission to do it. I'm, I'm kind of, I'm asking, isn't there a progress, progress kind of tranching that we would do in this agreement? What do you guys think about that?
Well, yeah, I think there should be some communication, obviously, between the two groups, and the only way you're going to do it is somehow get face to face. Or however, what you want to do it. I don't have any problem getting together with, with them, certainly. Depends again, actually on when and what day and. Only one day a week at this point, so. Thursdays.
Linda, how did it work with the, with the Friends of Town Ball? How did it, how, was there a, how did, how did it work? Tell us the story.
Well, they, they went out. They were totally separate from the town. We knew we were working on, we had money to do. A design. So the design was in the process. And they went out with the conceptual design and raised money. They looked at a three-year campaign. And they went out and they would periodically come in and say, well, we, we, as the warrant article was going out. We have, you know, X amount of money, we have X amount of money. And when the warrant article was written. They said, we have $750,000 towards this project. The library, on the other hand, said, we're going to try to raise as much money as we can. And they went out and did that. And again, as it went along, and we started writing the warrant article. We started to know where they were in that project. We did not write any of their campaign material. We did not have an agreement with them. They did it. But I think at that point, the town was clear on that there was going to be a warrant article. And kind of the timeframe, and that's where the difference is on this project. There, there is less defined project. You know, what is the size of the project? Why is it, so I think that's where, at least I'm feeling that we're having some of the issues. Is it not an already established project with a definite conceptual drawing? That we're moving out and we all agree that that's where we're going. We're either going to put it out in the warrant article this year or the following year.
Yeah, I, I'm, I think we spoke to this, it's in the minutes, I think, a little more clarity around what is the project. And I'll use numbers, is it a 2.9 or a 2.3? What is it that is, that is envisaged by the project? And that's probably on us more, as much as it's on them, because we have to be clear about what we are, what our appetite is, so they can go raise money. If we're not clear, then we, we all run the risk of setting, setting everybody up for a big oh. Caca kind of moment. So clarity on the, on what the project is, and I think that's on us. That's my personal opinion. It's on us. Now, we should do that in consultation with, I think with the friends. But at the end of the day, when someone says, who came up with this idea? I think it's on us. That's my personal opinion. I like the idea of sitting down with, with folks, you know, badmintoning documents back and forth is great if you're. If you're two continents away, we're, we're, we're only a couple of streets away from each other and we can probably get that done quicker. And I, I agree with Dave, we should make sure the calendars work. Before I turn it back out to, to the friends, Brad, you wanted to chime in? Yeah, please?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. First, I, I think to try and tie any milestones into the, you know. Type of form of an MOU, I think would be very difficult. I think, as Ben had pointed out, the other two that we've done, the two major ones for the library and the town hall. You know, they kind, they pretty much had a, had a bottom line goal they were going to go for and didn't have to meet certain obligations at certain timeframes that, that we knew about. They just kept us informed of how they were doing, which I think is, is a good approach. The other thing I just wanted to say is, you know, we're talking about plans and stuff like that. You know, we do have two. Fairly detailed plans in front of us, the 2.3 and the 2.9. And obviously, I think we all know that the, the Friends are really. Putting this whole drive together to go to the 2.9 and raise that amount of money that they're, they're want to commit to, based on that project. So my thought is, if we have the. If everybody's willing to even consider making a. I don't know if you want to call it a commitment, but a. A choice of the project to move forward with, to, to support, I guess would be the word, to put our support behind. On this, so that I think will be the first step for them moving forward while we sit down and try and, you know, come up with a language in an MOU. I don't know if that's anything that, that this board wants to entertain this evening, while we're all together here and stuff, so that we can start the process moving forward. You know. I would be in favor of that, so, so.
Linda, you're up.
Yeah, I guess I have, I have the problem with the 2.9. There were still issues of parking that we had not finished dealing with because of it moving into the parking area, the addition. So I'm willing to go to that if we get clarity on the project that we're talking about and we deal with the parking issue, which is to me the only real big issue that I have with that.
Can I call a timeout for everybody? I'm, I'm seeing a slide being presented by Julie Jacobs. How did that happen? Julie, what are you doing? Are you hijacking this thing? She hijacked the whole meeting.
Yeah, I'm saying this.
Get the cops. So Linda's, so that's a conversation, don't you think, Linda? That's a conversation with people, isn't it? Is that us?
I think so. I think that that, we got that plan to a certain spot. And we did not have the numbers or the finish of that one piece. We, and that was, I think, an issue that when it first went to the planning board, there was issue with the parking. And so we need to, if we say, oh, the 2.9, we need to make sure that we have the ability to address the parking. The other thing I'd like us to talk about is wherein our projects, is this project going to go? We're coming up to the date for the public safety building. And so that causes me real problem. Because that public safety building has been on that CIP for 10 years. It waited for the town hall to be done. It waited for the library and it was the next large project. So I think we have an issue on what is the timing? When do we see us going forward with this project? And I think we as a board need to kind of lay all that out. So I'm not ready tonight to say 2.9. I would need to have those two things by this board ironed out. The Friends of the, the Libby and we decide it's going to go in 2023 and they have multiple years to do their fundraising while we get that public safety building through. I'm fine with that. I think we need a timeframe on when this project is going to come in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with Linda on, on a couple of points. I think we, we kind of did an abrupt stop on, on the parking situation. I also, I'm reminded of the term line skipping. I think we heard that in one of the other warrant articles. You're skipping in front of the line. And that's okay. I mean, we're, you know, we're the Board of Selectmen and, you know, we get a lot of input from the public and we use our best judgment. And I just think for the, for the benefit of those people out there, Linda's exactly right. We probably are going to have a, a pop whalen activity coming in front of us in the next year. There's a lot of stuff out there. Now, that could be bad news for the Friends of the Libby. It could be good news for the Friends of the Libby because, you know, we're trying to figure out what the landing slot is for this, for this activity. And it may give them some more time to, to run a capital campaign. Or they may say, you know, it's impossible. It has to be done immediately. So. We need to get, I think we need to be a little more clear ourselves about what we want as members of the Board of Selectmen. And I don't think that should take us a long time to do that. And I do agree with Brad's suggestion, or maybe it was Linda's suggestion or Dave's, that we sit down and we have a conversation about what should this document be, mindful that, again, I get back to the basics. These people want to raise, the Friends want to raise a couple of million dollars and they want to raise an endowment. This, this is good news. It's just that we got to be a little more clearer about how this goes on. Members of the Board of the Libby Trustees, is there any other commentary before I, I, I allow the, or bring in the, our Friends of the Libby? Mr. Suncle, Linda, Brad? You guys okay if I open it up? Okay. Thank you, Julie, for hijacking the meeting. That was very nice. Jim, how did he do that? He doesn't know.
I was trying to get my camera to turn on and the whole thing is a wacko. Sorry.
Okay, super. All right. Who wants to go first from the Friends of the Libby? Show a hand. There you go. Tom Goodwin, you're up.
Thank you, Paul. I think one of the issues that the memo of understanding is trying to resolve is the fact that the Board of Selectmen is, is on public record as being in favor of the $2.3 million scaled down project. And we at the Friends of the Libby don't feel as that is a viable project to fundraise for. That the full expansion is going to net much more in donor support. And also in volunteer engagement in fundraising for. And what the memo of understanding was, was there to do is to show that the town is on the same page with us as we go out and do our fundraising. We, we have a hard time promoting that we're fundraising for the $2.9 billion project when the town is on the record as saying that they're not in favor of it. They're in favor of the $2.3 million project. So that I see as being the, the, one of the big stumbling points. And from talking to our fundraising consultant, we're, we're trying to make an aggressive pitch for major donors this year. We want to start in April and, and show substantial progress by August or September. When everything starts into the process for next year's warrant articles. So I think time is of the essence. I also think that the, the structural support of the building does not favor delaying this project for any length of time. That there's, there's major problems that have to be addressed. And you either address it with Band-Aids or you address it with the, with a full restoration. At this point, John, do you want to add anything to the conversation?
No, I'm, I'm sort of the newbie on the block, but I think Tommy, you put it pretty well. I think we've got, first want to thank the Selectman Herriman and Chairman O'Brien for letting us speak with you tonight. And I know Paul, this is could be one of your last meetings. So thank you for your service. And I'm sorry that Dave Bowers is temporarily off because he's been a tremendous asset to the Selectmen. But I think we're, we're frankly in this together and we're not going to get too many bites of the apple. And, and time is of the essence. So. What we really need is, I think Linda has outlined something that we can take to our constituency, which is, I think it'd be a very strong one to look, that we and the town are doing this together. We're going to raise 68% of the construction money and then raise another million dollars on top of that to help pay for ongoing costs and ultimately pick up some of the costs that the town will, will be paying over, paying for. I think Linda's idea that we get a group of a couple of us together to just sit down and talk through the language of what an appropriate MOU looks like, obviously nonbounding, you know, with Attorney Puffers counsel as to what works for him and what doesn't work for him. But I think that could be done. And we're, we're to the big issues is what the town wants, what we, the Friends see and we, they were, we're 100% committed to the idea of the full expansion with more exhibit space. There are some other items around the state that we could bring in and that's excluding some items that happen to be a little closer to town. I won't go into that would really show natural history to New Hampshire at its very best. Some of those are in the Hampshire Historical Society. There's a couple down at Brewster Music, the Brewster Academy. And some other places that will really enhance the collection, have an educational piece. Have an environmental police. We're all aware that the lake also needs our attention. The property backs up to the lake. So it'll be an environmental piece. We'd like to show the natural species. I'm sure we can raise the money for that to bring back the species that were there 200 years ago and keep them thriving. So I think we've really got a wonderful story to tell. And I'm, I'm fully confident that if we can, you know, come to an appropriate understanding memo, non-binding with the town, that we can sell our story, raise the 2 million. And I'd like to see us have half that in the till by early next fall. So if we, if we can get started on this, break ground June 2022, maybe. There were some other issues like the parking, how's that going to be resolved? I've seen a couple of thoughts have come in on how we can have a little more exhibit space for no more money, which I'm all in favor of because it's the exhibits and the education that are really everything. But, you know, we are on the same page and we're only going to get one or two bites at the apple. And I think now is the time. We're at an intersection where we can do it together or it's not going to happen. If it doesn't happen, that's really bad for everybody. Dr. Libby was a visionary, I'm told. I'd like to learn more about him and see some of his readings, but if he's anything like he's purported to be, he really has set a high bar for all of us. And we have a unique opportunity to step up and see that we're doing our part of the bargain. And you, the trustees, you're the fiduciaries. We just want to come along and help you raise some money. As I had a conversation with Paul this afternoon. Ultimately, we'd like to be more involved in the governments once we've earned that right. But those are all topics for future conversations.
So my reaction to the comments are, we also need to write down on a piece of paper a couple of critical things. At least for me. And, and for those of you who don't know me, my bedside manner sometimes is very direct. Why, why do we need to go from 2.3 to 2.9? What's the compelling place that would cause the Board of Selectmen to recommend to the voters that what we voted for has to change? We're not going to answer that tonight. Number two, I'm hearing that there's a sense of urgency to raise the money. What is the, what is the period of time that you believe you can raise those funds? And we're, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to hold you to it, but you need to be a little more communicative, at least to us. Because as you just heard a few minutes ago, we're bumping up against a whole bunch of other capital projects that are going to be, you know, bid by members of the community and members of the town. I got the part about the building being in trouble. And if it is, then that's a town responsibility and it will continue to be a town responsibility. And if it needs to get repaired, then it, that's why that $300,000 is in the wagon. So I think, you know, at least for me personally, and then I'll turn it over to you, the rest of you. I, I think, I think if it's important, which for you folks it is, write it down on a piece of paper. And tell us what your, you know, what your sequence plan needs to be in order for you to get things done. Because absent that, we'll spend, personal opinion, we'll spend a whole bunch of time writing a document about what we intend and might think about doing, and we won't get off ground zero. So I think a seat, you know, an idea of what needs to be sequenced would be very, very helpful. My personal opinion. Okay, anybody else? Tom, did you want to punctuate something or John or Julie? Did you have anything?
Yeah, Paul, I'll just jump in and say I can be equally transparent and direct. And I think you're right on. And I think I, I sit down, working session, roll up our sleeves and talk through some of these points and get some clarity is exactly what we need. And I'd say the sooner the better. I don't know if anybody's had their COVID shot yet. I have not, but, you know, eight feet distancing masks. I think we could, I'm, I'm, I'm game. Let's go. You know, let's, let's sit down and figure this out because the time is of the essence.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree with that. I think last night we learned very clearly, at least the hope of the public did, in this town, plans get funded. Good plans, solid plans with, with deliverables get funded. And, and I just, I just imagine what, you know, what, you know, what the reaction is going to be. We need to have a solid plan to get it funded. Linda, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just really would like that whoever the selectmen sit down, that if we take out that CIP plan and make sure that where this thing is going to land is reasonable that we can get it through. You know, if it lands with the public safety building, it's not going. So we need to take that timeframe out and not, and I, I'm 100% behind you guys for doing it. I just don't want us to get going and then find out we've just run up against something major. Like the public safety building. So I think we have a piece to do. I also want us to get that to 2.9, if that's where you want to raise money for, and make sure we get the things that still need to be finished in terms of parking and stuff on that. Then to send you out with, with something that we're going to say, oh, wait a second, we don't have the parking. I want us to make sure we have all our pieces together. That once we say, yep, we're going to go with that, that you and the town and the Friends all understand exactly what we're going to do and that we have those last few pieces together to do that. And I think the difference, and we should go back and look at the difference between the 2.3 and the 2.9. And I think part of what we were looking at was the impact that was going to happen to the, to the rate payer, the taxpayer. And, you know, in this, what are we looking at if we, if they only have to put in 900,000? So let's take a look at some of those figures too and know why we can give, give us the reason to land on the 2.9.
Now, I think, so I think we're all saying kind of the same thing is let's, let's get clarity about the ambition here. Absent clarity, we're just going to throw around, you know, we're not doing this, but we could wind up throwing around hypothetical urgent, and it's not going to, it doesn't work. If it's important, we should write it down. And if we write it down on a piece of paper, then you, we can all look at each other and say, yes, you all agree to a parking lot. Or yes, you all agree to do. That's what I think is important. So any last ones before Tom? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm in full agreement with Linda that we need to get coordinated with the, the CIP on this. Because we, we at the Friends, as we go out and fundraise, we also need to know whether we're looking for commitments that are going to come in over 2021 and 2022, or whether it goes out over more years. On the one hand, I, I don't think the building, I, I don't want to see the building get delayed. On the other hand, getting a three-year commitment out of someone might be easier than getting a two-year commitment out of a donor. So. There's, there's pluses and minuses on both sides, but I think it's important that we know where it's positioned in the CIP as we go through the fundraising.
Managing cash flow is, is important. Obviously the town's going to run the project because they own the property, but managing cash flow is critical. And I feel like I've never been in favor of spending money we didn't have. So we will have it on hand when we spend it to complete the project. And we're not going to be doing something we can't pay for. I think that's absolutely critical.
This guy doesn't live in Wolfboro. We should, we should have you move into Wolfboro so you could join the Board of Selectmen. So the question on the table is, who wants to sign up to, to do this? This would be for the Libby Trustees. Wants to be, wants to be on this. I, I will be, I will be a missing person in 30 calendar days. Mr. Suncle has raised, and are you raising to sign up, Dave? Yes, okay. And Linda Martin has.
You want to do it or I can do it? I don't care. You know, you're on the Friends.
Yeah, I just, just kind of wondering if that would be, I guess it would really be a conflict, but I don't know what your thoughts are on that. Well, being on a, on both boards.
Bad idea for you to do it.
Like what?
I think it would be a bad idea for you to do it. You're already sitting on the.
I'm willing to sit down. I'm willing to, but I, you know, I have a, I have a CIP and, and we can take a look at that. So I'm uncomfortable to work with Dave and the Friends and see if we can come up, you know? And we're going to have two new members on the board. So getting some of this together and getting those people on, whoever are the next members, then you'll have the, the new board who will be the ones moving forward with you.
And I tend to, tend to agree with Linda's perspective here. Linda knows because she's been intimately involved in the capital improvement game for more years than, than any of us. So she knows how this process works and knows how things get done. This is going to be integral to this conversation. Mr. Suncle, unless there's, do we need a motion, Jim, to do this, other than just Linda and Dave have signed up and Brad will continue as a friend person? Do we need anything motion here? No motion? Okay, without objection then, Linda and Dave, you'll be the two select people that will join. And who are we going to be coordinating with? Tom and John?
I'll look Tom. Probably Tom and.
Yeah, myself and John. I think we'll take the lead on this from the Friends side.
Okay, all right. And so at the moment, the letter of intent is kind of, we're just gonna hang it, we're just gonna hang it up on the clothesline for a minute. I think the ambition here is to get specific on dates, get specific on milestones. I think the two Selectmen will come back to the Board of Selectmen and will have to either say, change the 2.3 to 2.9 or keep the 2.3. That'll be something that'll have to be done because we are on the record for that. And clearly, you folks will want to get together. And I think I'll leave the four of you with the freedom to go figure out how to meet. Okay, anything else before we adjourn this session?
Chairman Brad?
Yes.
Why the decision on who can represent that group? I don't understand.
Mary, this is Paul. Could you rephrase your question? I didn't understand it.
All right. So I think if I heard correctly, there was a member of the Board of Selectmen wanting to participate and now they're not. Why not?
No, I don't think that's, I still don't understand, I understand your comment. So let me see if I can make a statement and then tell me if you missed it. Dave Senical and Linda are gonna team up with Tom Goodwin and John Wilkins to put a little more structure around this conversation. Did you have a question about that?
I think she had a question about whether Brad wanted to and not one of us. I think the question was around whether Brad wanted to be on it and didn't. Am I correct, Mary?
Yes, I think that's what I heard, or at least I think I heard.
Okay.
Yeah, I can answer that probably, Mary. I had two thoughts in my mind. One was, because I'm on a Board of Selectmen, I'm also on the Friends of the Libby Museum Board. Whether that's a conflict or not, I don't really know. But also the fact that Linda has a lot of history with these types of groups raising money with the town hall and with the library. She brings a lot of good knowledge there. And I think she'd be an excellent choice to work with Dave on this, to get this MOU document, you know, and an understanding between, you know, the town and the Friends to move forward with the project. So that was kind of, that's kind of why I backed away to have her sit on the Board on that committee with Dave Senical. So can I ask you a question?
Yeah, did that answer your question, Mary?
Thank you for that. Yes, I not understand that there is a strategic motion about that. So now that I do, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, anything else, Libby trustees? Anything else, Friends of Libby folks?
Thank you.
Okay, good. This, we'll make progress. That's what we want to do. We want to make progress.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Okay, with that, Mr. Chairman Harriman, I am leaving my position as trustee chairman. I'm turning it back over to you.
All right, thank you, Paul. Thank you, everybody. Okay, have a good night. Next thing in our